The following program is sponsored by John Chatches Insurance. Your local farmer's insurance agent located 800 Avenue G in Ely, and brought to you as a public service by KGTV, Channel 10 in Ely, Nevada. Special Meeting of the Ely City Council, September 18th, 2019.
... Please join me in the assembly. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll have the roll call.
Mayor Robertson.
President.
Councilman Flankis.
I'm here.
Councilman Carson.
Here.
Councilman Alworth.
Here.
Councilman Hansen. City Attorney Pfeiffer.
Here.
City Attorney Trapp.
Here.
City Attorney Alma.
Here.
City Attorney Stewart.
Here.
We've got some here.
Okay. Did we miss anybody? We'll move on to public comment. Please state your name for the record if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, on your agenda, I am through to your considered possible appointment, not election of two people to fill Mr. Felice's resignation. You need to advertise the opening, which I don't remember seeing anything in the paper in regards to an opening being available. Mr. Spear in the past has not responded to previous requests as to whether or not he had a proper business license when he was contracting with the Tour and Rec Board. If he didn't, then he has a problem as well as Mr. Flankis, who sat on the Tour and Rec Board's chairman. Part of that is making sure everybody has property license. We can't have selective enforcement. Mr. Mayor, you've got a special meeting coming up tomorrow. And in the paperwork that I received, there was no information as to what the railroad debt is. I've asked in the past. He gave permission to borrow 200,000 a while back. Then it was half a million, now we're at 450,000. So what is their debt? 200,000? A million? We need to know. They don't operate under the Nevada open meeting law, and that needs to be addressed. You've got to bring them back under the purview of the city of Ely. If they can't make it, you cannot continue to give them money when the taxpayer doesn't know how it's being spent. Mr. Mayor, you need to put out an advertising request in engineering services. The city is not addressing proper enforcement of city codes and regulations. Recently, a concrete triangle obstruction was placed on the east ingress, egress of Avenue D, which narrows the road dramatically, narrower than the city standards. The walkway on the north side of Avenue D is not passable. The curb and gutter that was installed is not the city specs. It should be five feet from the property note, seven or eight feet. Narrow, this street was narrowed as it is. Why did you not come off the property line? Someone's not doing their job. The walkway needs to be flat, not at a 45-degree angle. For those in a wheelchair, it makes it difficult. For those who have trouble with the hip or knees, how do you expect them to navigate that walkway? You have city standards and you're not abiding from them, with them, excuse me, let alone federal ADA regulations. You've got staff that's not paying attention. You need to address that. The city has yet to address the improper width of the road, the road with, the road to the aquatic center. Faded and correct the Seventh Street ADA access along my fence line, 622 High Street on Seventh Street where the railroad installed the new drainage under the track. Riprap was installed from the asphalt roadway up to my fence line. I have some disability and I cannot do basic maintenance along my fence line. That's not going to cut it, Mayor. We all know what the rules of regulations are. It needs to be addressed. You need to bring on staff that knows what they're doing. Put out a request, see who you get, maybe the city will get a better shape. You're not doing that. I hope you do that.
Thank you, George. Any more public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to item three. Item for discussion, possible action only of the Ely City Council. Item one, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, acceptance of Tony B. Felice's resignation as member of the Ely City Council, seat three. More comments on that?
I'll move to approve.
As you have in your packet, we do have his letter here. That was given to us today before our last regular meeting. I believe he's pretty explicit here. I know he was hoping to have a change in his work situation, to allow him to attend more. He just wasn't able to do that. Is there any further discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Very in so order. Item three, number two. Mayor Robertson, Councilman Flankis, discussion for possible action, election of Michelle Beecher or Miss Spear, seat three, on the Ely City Council. I will entertain some suggestions on how the council would like this to proceed.
Nice to hear from both of you.
Per the NRS, we did review that after our meeting last time. I know I already spoke with Jennifer about this as well. The way this works is we all have a vote, including myself. It's not an appointment, but an election from the board. So any one of us, including myself, can make a motion or second to vote. And that's, that's how it still works. Is there any questions about that?
Have we been doing it all this time?
If you've been doing it different than that, yes.
All right. Good to know.
One doubt, three directions. So I guess we'll hear from Michelle first, we'll go alphabetically. She has anything to say, we'll hear that, if you have any questions for her.
Hello, everyone. As you all know, I ran for a city council seat earlier this year against Jim, and he ended up winning that election. I was, I was excited for the opportunity to serve this city. I, you know, I've, I've been a resident for a long time, as has the rest of my family, and I, you know, I, I work here in economic development, and I feel strongly and passionately about, about rural Nevada and what it's capable of. And I didn't, I didn't really prepare any remarks, but I, you know, I would, when, when I was asked if this would be something that I would be interested in, I, I am definitely, wholeheartedly, you know, ready to take on that challenge, so.
Any questions for Mrs. Beecher?
I probably have a question. I think you wouldn't be a good sit up here on the council, but you probably do have one of the toughest jobs in this room, is raising a family, and I'm just wondering, no disrespect, do you have the time to really commit to this? Because this takes a lot more time than one would take.
Right, that's, that's a good question. I am a busy person, I have young children who are very involved. But I think, what's, what's the saying? That if you want something done, ask someone who's busy, because they know how to get things done. I know how to prioritize my time. Obviously, there are some times where I might be out of town. I also have a full-time job that I travel for sometimes. And I know how to prioritize. I know how to make sure that my children get to where they need to be and where my job, you know, is done and done well, and that I have the time for the things that I need. So, so I prioritize well, and, you know, I'm sleeping on the weekends, so.
Thanks, George. Any other questions of Mrs. Beecher?
Working in economic development, what do you see as being the potential that we have under the latest one that we might be able to tap into in the future to grow the economy?
I think we just need to encourage business owners, you know. Anything that we can do to help current business owners unify their property, anything that we can do to help, you know, with, I, I'm also a counselor, a business counselor with the Small Business Development Center. Getting people in there and helping them with advertising and whatnot. And then when, when businesses come before us, we need to be as encouraging as possible, because it is hard to start a small business. And it is, it's draining. And any resources that we can give would be, would be helpful.
I'd like to just reinforce, first question, I had the same question, Michelle. And the one thing I found out once I got elected, the amount of time it does take. I'm totally happy I retired to have this time, because it's just not two meetings a month. I've had four meetings as we, associated with the city in advance. You know, and I know a lot about your guys' job, you do a lot of traveling around the state. I just hope you can make some of the other meetings with the other committees and assignments.
Right.
I am really astonished at how much time this job takes.
Right. And, and you know, the thing with my family is, I have an extremely supportive husband, and I also have an extremely supportive ex-husband who co-parents with me. And so we have all kinds of support. I also have extended family here, I have siblings, I have parents, who are always more than willing to step in and pick up a kid up from practice if I need to.
Well, I was more of directed to like a railroad board meeting, tourism rec board meeting, an ex-board meeting, such like that. You know, they come throughout the whole week at different times.
Sure, yeah.
It's just not twice a month or monthly utility board, so.
Any other questions?
Yes, I'm going to ask kind of a little personal question to take respect to Michelle. One of the things that we've been trying to do within the city in the past, and for the future, and that is to try to clean up our community and make it look more presentable and by far appealing to other visitors or even the neighborhood. And having to open your house on Murray Street, I see you only watering your grass and it's all dead. That's not very appealing to the neighborhood.
No, it's not. We had a lawn mower break halfway through the summer, and, and a 13-year-old who was in Little League and not able to properly handle that. So, yeah, we did, we did fall down on our, on our yard this year, but there's always next year.
Okay, well, which is kind of disturbing to watch.
Any other questions for Mrs. Beecher? Thank you. Mrs. Spear?
First of all, for the record, I've, Ed Spears has only raised in Ely my entire life I've spent here. The reason I'm actually looking to hit on the city council and reason I ran is probably what everybody in this room wants, and that's to improve the finances of the city of Ely. And I know the city of Ely has been short-changed for over 20 years. Because the city residents pay at the warm, $0.366 a hundred. Not one single penny comes back to the city congress to upgrade, manage, or maintain the city of Ely. The only city in the state invited. The best one is Mondofer, gets $1.56 of the 366. The worst one, well, not the worst one, because this is a dime a dollar, is Yerington, which gets only 44 cents of the, 44.14 or something of the 366. We have been struggling and struggling and struggling since I won this council several years ago, infrastructure, with our streets, with the cemetery, and yet we pay 50% of all the annual taxes generated, paid by city residents, those of the county, zero comes back. And we need to go and address how their, our funding needs to increase. If we can do those things that we need to do to maintain the city, instead of just what we have to do, what's mandated, what we call the safety. We need to go beyond that, folks, and I prefer to take that fight. It's not to be a burden. And we need to put money in this, hopefully, to improve this city. And that, if you want to do it, because if you can't increase taxes, or you're going to have to negotiate that, or litigate. I mean, I think there's litigation, or if nothing else, maybe legislation. But I think you've got a very strong case, 19 incorporated cities in the state of Nevada. One gets zero. One. Light one coming. The city of Ely, that's, that's a shame, that's a fine shame. And Jim knows all the tax deals, the CTX taxes and all the different taxes we have. I think we're getting cheated on, there are these fees a lot because of that. Our software, and some of those things we need to address, so we can put more money and revenue into the city of Ely to do those things that we, as elected officials, are responsible to do. That's about it. Any questions?
I have one, Ed. How's, how's, you know, we're working with Tourism Rec Board, which you were part of, you know. How's your feeling? You got a competition with, you know, we're all tourist-based around here.
Sure. Well, you know, I, I heard a lot of stuff when I ran for mayor about, you know, how to bend that and whatnot. Well, I don't think there's a person with room to spend as much money as I have to promote tourism, and I maintain that. I'm still president of the Grand Circle Association, we're at four meetings a year, which is very expensive, like maintaining my personal membership. I'm involved with the SSCC on the board of directors for the car race. Very active with the Nevada Commission on Tourism and Territory Territory. And that hasn't ceased, so I think the revenue needs to be looked at. There's no doubt about it. The revenue stream is going to increase in tourism, because it has, and it continually will. But, you know, the city needs to look at some of that as well. And I'm strongly supportive of that. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Any other questions for Mrs. Spear?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on one of these candidates?
I'll read those for Mr. Spear.
Do I have a second for Mr. Spear?
I'll second that.
Can we have a discussion on Mr. Spear from the council? You know, I, I can appreciate all the time that Ed has spent in our community and still continues to be in service to the community here. You know, my personal feelings on this are, I would really, you know, well, I stated when I ran, I would like this to be a council that is able to take someone who isn't just retired, has nothing, you know, nothing but time to spare on it. I mean, this is a, it's a part-time position. And it, it should be open to all the good people in our community, whether they're employed, have families, or anything else. And that's, that's what I'm striving for on that. I can appreciate Mr. Spear's time that he has to spend on this. But I would like to make sure that we're not just catering to elect people who have nothing but time. I, I really do. I mean, then we're, we're sectioning off a small section of the community there, who can serve. So that's, that's my two cents on that. But any other further discussion on the motion on the floor?
I like that. I like Ed's aggressiveness, his past history with the city. But some of the past has brought us to the position we're in right now.
Sure.
So again, I admire him, he goes after something, it's full war. You know, I think we're plus what we need. We can't be idle, we have to be aggressive. We have to jump now, we have to act now to get our stuff turned around in the positive way.
Kurt, you have something to say?
I think they'd both be great assets to the city of Ely, so wish we could take them both right now, but this can't. But you never know. You never know.
Well, and, and we are looking at that, that Ad-Laura issue. I know we've got at least two councilmen who have been, Mr. Flankis and Mr. Alworth have been looking at that. So it hasn't fallen on that very certainly. I know we've, we've been discussing that, we've got a meeting about that coming up here pretty shortly too, so. That's my two cents on that too. We are looking at that, so that's, that, that can't be the only issue we're voting on. Any other further discussion on this item? With that, I'll call for the vote, starting with myself, which is no.
Oh, yes.
Kurt?
Carson is aye.
Aye.
I want to say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Carry this forward. We move on to the number four. Swear as the newly appointed officer by city attorney, that's your answer.
It is. Well, let's see, yeah, yeah. Rejuring.
I, Ed Spear, do solemnly swear to affirm that I protect and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and government of the state, against all enemies, whether domestic or foreign, and with very true faith, believing in the laws of the state, and in accordance with the resolution of law, the statement of the state, of the Senate. I will well and faithfully perform all my duties and remember that the Ely City Council, seat three, of which I am of all integrity. So help me God.
Have a seat.
Hey, Ed. Excuse me, did he, he, he just set off your car alarm, maybe?
Pardon me?
Did he just set off your car alarm? Yep.
Moving on to item five. Mayor will recess the regular city council meeting for immediate of the prostitution licensing and control board. Item one, board members' discussion for possible action, approval of the house of prostitution license to Gary Dean Phillips, DBA Stardust Ranch, located 195 Street, Ely, Nevada. I will entertain a motion on this item.
How much portion to approve that item?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any vote?
Nay.
Carry this forward. We'll move on to item six. Items for discussion, possible action only of the Ely City Council. Council members, city attorney, file discussion for possible action, approval of consulting services agreement between the city of Ely and the state of Ely. I will entertain a motion on this item.
Close to approve.
Do I have a second?
Also, I think I'll see which is the.
Discussion on this item. You guys received some, you guys received some notes on this. I believe it was submitted by Councilman Alworth. And then you have a part of the agreement here, full agreement with some highlighted sections about the change, the change portions of that. PJ, did you have anything to add on this?
I don't.
Okay. You reviewed the draft.
Yes.
Things here from Councilman Alworth. Any discussion?
I'd like to address the items left, but after the, the reason I went for a two-year agreement is, I seem to be, the consensus really is geared around the State Highway Project. And like the last meeting I, the meeting I mentioned, you know, I mean, interested in, you know, if things turn out right, to get an in-house engineer. That gets through to everybody, give me an indication, I agree. It's important to keep it in your own work, or for this job we got going right now, or taking it with, and on. So, two years, that's, that was my thrust on that. And the compensation, he had started at 52, he was about $200 a year per month. I kept it, recommended to keep it at 5200 a month through the two-year agreement. Because like I stated also, we're in a financial condition with the city. Some city employees haven't received any kind of increase over several years. Well, that was my thrust on that, like 5200 is fair. And then I went through basically, you know, I tried to, to me, the wording with the construction of the project wording, as I tried to explain here, you know, I have no problem, the city going out looking for a grant, C W G, Snipola, but it's spelled not right. You know, that, that's cool, because we went after that, re-engineered stuff, and we did this here. 15%, that seems to be the norm for engineering, brought up at the last meeting. But here we are, for example, the state coming in, putting this highway project in there, and BJ's been tasked with locating all the water stuff and sewers and all this other relocation and stuff. And 15% of a huge contract is a lot of money. It's something we have no control going into the budget with. So I just have a little party with that. Basically, once again, it's a lot of money, you know. And I don't know, there's a better way, I just thought at that time, we have plenty of time ahead. Throw, throw line in there, the engineering services for these type projects are going to be advertised for competitive compared to bidding. That's my first one. And I just think, who knows what could happen, you know. We're, we're seeing a lot of growth coming on, all of a sudden we get a little bit of a big, somebody's going to come in and make a big expansion. Say Blueberry Hill is going to expand. That's my idea, that we've got a lot of engineering involved in this, something we have no control on. That's I do of that. And then on Article Six, if PJ was to continue with this right here, the wording down in Article Six, you know, that the trouble more on that was sole, we showed the gene, the sole owner and author of the word. I just wanted some clarification that, into this area with anybody, we need to make sure we have access to those files. What I mean is, we get rid of an engineer, we get those files back. We don't even know, at least I don't know, but I don't know a lot about this right anyway. But we talk around, who's got the drawings on one? Well, I don't have that drawing, I do have that drawing. So this way here, it was right on the get-go. A list in the inventory of all drawings, I'm not saying come down, throw them on the table, but anytime there's, within 10 days, we need to get this done, so we can review it. And then after, you know, every six months, if it comes up with something new through the inventory. So if something was to happen, it was a bit to BJ. What do we have? I'm just trying to protect our written assets, but we don't really know what he had in his computer. You know, there's a lot of confidential material in there, that's why I agree, or I thought that'd be a good article. And then the last one, Article 10. I seen a conflict with the big hotel down there, he's an engineer for them, engineer for the city, and putting one against the other. I mean, you got money coming in from both sides, so that word in that, you know, consultant shall not engage any professional service with another entity, which will or may result in a conflict. It's tough, because you're a small town. We only got so much resources to go around. And, and I'll just give you, you know, an example, was that big curb and gutter that was discussed. They wanted an L-shaped curb and gutter, but the drawings were, they said that to be straight. We sent them to the meeting there, and nothing was said about it. Public work supervisor said, it doesn't have to be an L curb. So, when in, whether or not they lower the price, I don't know. But that's just, you know, just, you know, it's a conflict. He's got a business, a big hotel going in, 1300 million dollars it is. And he didn't want to upset them, but I'm looking to know what's good for the city. So that's why I, we can't have no conflict in this. Well, like, that's, it's tough in a small town, if I understand that. Those are my reasons for what I drew up.
I certainly understand the rationale there. I, I think it would be hard to prohibit them from engaging in any of this. And having reviewed that hotel project lately with Brad, and certainly being involved in it on another aspect, you know, I think we need to suss out more our process there, work certain, especially when it comes to conflicts. And, you know, we do do the review, we farm that out, if there's a conflict, but making sure that that gets carried through on revisions as well. I don't know that you've done a great job of that. I, I don't know how you can categorically exclude them from anything, but, I mean, and how would you know? Unless you just percluded them from almost any of it. It may prove to be a conflict down the road that was unforeseen, I don't know. But I do understand the rationale behind that. I just don't know how you categorically exclude it though. Furthermore, Brian Crippen, if I'm wrong, in the state of Nevada, we can't hire professional services based on cost. We have to do it on qualification only and then negotiate cost after that. I understand the rationale there, but there is some NRS that kind of hamstrings us in that respect.
With all due respect, Mr. Mayor, I'm not, I'm not, I'm throwing out a price, I'm not saying,
Sure.
you know, we want this, I'm recommending.
Well, I mean, in reference to, if there was a big project coming, to, to put out an RFP to see if we could get a better deal is not the way we can do that. It has to be based on qualification.
Again, I don't see why I put the word dollars in there, last sentence.
No, I was just talking to your conversation.
Some separate, confusing.
Go that way.
Well, one thing I got to say, any project that's been done and hasn't been done by this man, the input to the city council, Alworth, Ben, and Carter, you know, seems to have a constitution. In a good fashion, some things that I've seen, a little apprehensive of all. in a good fashion, some things that I've seen, a little apprehensive of, those are type of corrections, if we know in advance, we can correct before anything should happen. I know it's very hard, having real engineering room in the area, in the past, they hired a engineer from Melco, and also from Reno, and whatnot, and that wound up being significantly expensive, because the mindless of all the problems, we have to make a phone call, regardless of what they're going to be analyzing. This, we, we get a wish, we immediately put it in.
Have, have you consented to these draft items that Jim put in there, there's still discussion on this?
I do not consent to any of them.
Okay, you do not consent to any of them, or some of them, or?
No.
I can say to you, would you please?
I consent to these, this with you.
Without these drafts?
Yeah, without these.
May I?
You may.
I have a bit of issue maybe, or turning, help me out, I'm in ownership of the project, but I would think whenever we had an engineer project in City Ealing, it followed, blueprints everywhere belonging to the city, and Eric says, uh... Yeah, I think part of the problem is, it does actually say that at the end, it converts the client's property upon termination, right, so when they're not working anymore. So, I think really what Councilman Haller's talking about is, is maybe having the projects that are definitely completed, become the property of the city on an interim basis, because...
Yeah, I, I have, I have no problem, because we keep everything electronic, you can bring me down a thumb drive, oh, give me a couple days, I'll put it all on there, I have no issue with that, because, you know, I had the same trouble when we came on board, we're missing things that I don't have, so it is a struggle, but I keep everything electronically, I have no problem at all, you know, coming here, if you want, every six months, bring a thumb drive, I'm, I'm fine with that, it's no problem at all.
See, and the reason I put that out, again, the wording of the sole owner, and, you know, he'd stay on, but the thing is, termination, of, well, when, when do we want to get these? You know, that's, I mean, I mean, that's why I said this, ten days, we got it.
It's balancing two different concepts, it's balancing the concept of sort of intellectual property, and the expert who's drafting it versus the owner of the property. I mean, we have a lease under this to get these, whenever we want, and then they actually physically become ours, under our ownership, when he's still working for us, but it sounds like we're, we could probably be amenable to some in-between.
Well, and also, I think it's kind of the thing about timing too, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Carl's had a few problems once in a while, he needs a map, right now, BJ's always been great about going down, showing, hey, just look on the map, here's the map, or whatever, but there could be a time where BJ could be out of town, and maybe, you know, his staff might be out of town, it'd be nice to either have that on a computer downloaded, or have, you know, some of the older files that maybe BJ doesn't need, or whatever, you know, in Carl's office, or whatever, if that makes sense.
Well, I mean, I agree with that, but that would just be a policy, we, we understand that as a policy.
Right.
Like, saying, okay, yeah, we want to copy, and this is where we're keeping them, would be one thing, but I think we have a problem, you know, as well, for those employees, do we have them, but we really haven't established where to keep them, and they were on a computer, and did we have the thing, the password, and, you know, we just have had no policy or directive on that. And I don't think, I think the wording in this is good, I just think we need a policy on where does the city keep their version of this.
Yeah, so, by example, I mean, if, if the council approves this tonight, the old agreement's terminated, so all that work hard becomes ours. And that's the language of the old agreement, it's just a carryover.
It hasn't precluded us from having that stuff.
It hasn't precluded us to exercise in the license language that's in it as well, so it does sound like it's more sort of a policy, that, you know, redundancy, you know, having access to, to certain documents at certain times, um, I, I don't know how you rectify that in here, because I mean, it just, this thing could be two hundred pages long, but...
Well, I, I think the wording was sufficient, I know it's kind of legal, but he is, but I'm satisfied that it's that, that we will have a copy of that, it is our, it is our work, I mean, not our work, it's his work, but it's our, it's our property anyways.
In the license, in this one?
Yeah, yeah, under Article Six, yeah.
If I could, BJ, why don't you want a two-year agreement? It's pretty silly, I'm like, three.
Well, I, I guess I'm looking at the same, well, I made the concession last time coming in here, said if you really want a local, hold on employee, you know, we got another year to make that transition, and help the city get to where you want to be, if that's where you want to be. And it just helps me in running a business, I just, longevity of it, that's just a typical length of words and stuff, so it's just the normal.
And then I, again, look at the same concept, trying to run the business, the city, so, thank you.
Well, and three years still gives us a chance to, to go out for our M.P. before the next elections, I mean, it's, the next elections are three and a half years away,
Okay, so then, the, the big dollar item is that fifteen percent thing, so that, can we get some feedback on that, BJ, I mean, I don't know, I mean, this, uh, State Highway project here, this city, you tell it, or leave it, or you take, you know, so, I'm, I'm trying to wrestle with that, you know, this turned out that we committed a lot of money, and the contractor had no idea.
It can be, it can be, it's a large project, but some of the things that's also going on in there is, where there's conflicts, you will be reimbursed for those conflicts, and you will also be reimbursed for that pipeline that goes in the ground, so Ed's got a look on his face, so what's happening here is, is we went to them, and, you know, years ago, the city had actually did a capital improvement increase to save money for this project that was coming. And so, with that there, the city had intentions of, here's our plan, of what we want to, basically, we need to upgrade, these are old lines, and so, uh, you know, it's going along that thing, but what's happening is, there's other areas now, with them doing their storm drain and everything else, they're conflicting with stuff that wasn't necessarily our intention to replace. And so, now that we have to actually upgrade that improvement through that area, they will reimburse the city for the cost of, I shouldn't say they reimburse, the cities just won't have to pay for those portions that will come in there, and so, uh, you know, there's portions out there where our sewer is conflicting with their proposed storm drain systems going in here, and then we actually have to have, you know, kind of dual sewer lines running to be able to serve both sides of the road, and that will be something that will be repaid by them, and so, all of that is coming in here, so with what all the work that we're doing right now, and right now, we're actually dealing with some conflicts on Great Basin Boulevard, um, there's a storm drain that they're upgrading up through there, is conflicting with our water line, so we're coming and moving in, and, uh, put it in location where it don't conflict, it's going to be actually truly a better location for us. And so, through disagreements, with those last we come together with Endo, it comes in, is once everything is completed, they realize, hey, this is betterment, what I mean by betterment, that's stuff that we needed to improve, and we intended to improve, and then there's conflict, and so they'll be coming in here, and for ease of conversation, they're going to come in and say, okay, you're putting in a thousand feet of water line, five hundred of it was conflict with us, and so, you're responsible for five hundred feet, we're, Endo will be responsible for the other five hundred feet, and so, I was having this conversation with, with Jennifer myself, and I said, at that point in time, you know, any fees that are associated, that are above and beyond that, he said, we, now we have the design to move our water line, those fees also need to be negotiated in that agreement, that there would be reimbursement as well, so...
So Endo will be reinforcing not only the construction, but also?
That's the way I feel, yes, we can cover this area.
The engineering issues for that conflict.
And, and it probably won't necessarily be a reimbursement, it'll be a situation when you actually go out, where that's just, you get a deed out, you don't have to pay that one, so...
Sure, but to go back to this issue of the fifteen percent, the way it's worded in here is a not to exceed, correct me if I'm wrong, but our discussion was, that most of these projects are just built on an hourly basis, on well under the fifteen percent, this is just, it will never be more expensive.
For the most part, we don't necessarily hit there, if we run into some project where we've had some problems, or we had to do something differently, and it gets, then obviously at that point in time, take, we'll come back to the council, and say, hey, look, this is what's going on, you guys will have to probably well aware of something going on along that lines, we ran into some issues, or whatever.
Have you ever built a city for a project on a percentage base, rather than on a hourly basis?
Uh, no, I've always been, I've always built.
How do we budget for an hourly basis on a project, but when that's submitted for approval of the city? You didn't did an estimate, like, I estimate this many hours, and this is what the engineering is going to be?
No, what we, what we normally do, is we go out here, and we're budgeting, estimating for a project that you want to do a sewer line next year, you come in here, estimated the costs, and all of those costs are included in that estimate, that is budgeted for next year project.
Because on the C W G proposal, looks like you want a fifteen percent engineering, fourteen point nine, so I'm now just doing backwards math on those, you know, so the fifteen percent, I mean, it's just a budget thing, the C W G would have awarded the family, we get the money, it doesn't pass through.
Correct.
Is there any further discussion on this, or questions about that fifteen percent, or anything else?
I, I think it's fair that we do keep BJ on, um, he's done a great job, but, you know, on the other hand too, I do like some of Jim's slots here, he's just tried to set up his training work to save part of the city.
I think we've been well served by BJ's firm during the entire time that he's occupied that position, I don't think we've had anything come back to haunt us, if he has done, and especially, as you pointed out, the projects we've dug in on now, it's a narrative we keep on, I don't know, quite satisfied, or, I think we're against what else, so, but thank you for what you brought up, some examples.
Yeah, it's, and that as well, because, you know...
So I'd like to add a little something, that is, in the past, when we had questions, I have, have to say that BJ has really came up and helped us in all of the projects that we've had, running the convention center and stuff, so I do know that he comes out and gets the stuff as fast as he can to us, uh, I look at the budget, you know, we budget every year, and three years is a long time, but if, if, if council fills its needs, stood to, and I guess that's what we need to go with, but BJ has been more than obliging to everything I've ever requested from him and his company, without a doubt, and through Christmas projects.
Well, and even on the three-year part of the agreement, we did insert language here, did we, about if we hired, if we decide to hire a full-time employee to cover this, that BJ's firm is willing to help with the transition, and, you know, renegotiate the contract, so that if they're doing X, Y, and Z, BJ's firm is still the one until three years is up, correct me if I'm wrong, for A, B, and C, for example, for example, if we hire someone and they still need surveying services, that would be BJ's firm until the rest of the contract's up, but that would be renegotiated at that time, is that?
That's, yes, that's a good cause.
So I, I, you know, I'm comfortable with the three years, and as it stated, um, I think a lot of this stuff that you bring up, Jim, is, is stuff, I mean, apart from the compensation, are things, um, you know, if the council are going for this, needs to be better informed about as, as projects come up, and make sure that if we have questions of the engineer, when there's a project, we ask them prior approval of the project, and maybe in the past, I've got overlooked some, and there have been some big projects, and maybe in the past, we haven't had a policy to, to kind of look at that, um, you know, I know we've kind of been playing fast and loose over the last several years about a lot of that, so, I personally, I'm satisfied for the moment, um, with the way the, the agreement's drafted, but that's, that's my two cents.
Can I get some clarification, I'm trying to read this, and this, and, on Article Six, our possession, so, it's saying when BJ is terminated, then we get all our stuff back, right?
Yeah, when the agreement's terminated.
The agreement, yeah.
Yeah, we become the owners of it, right, it's no longer his, uh, intellectual property that he can retain, that gives us stuff.
So, I definitely like the Jim's lot there, you know, inventory, and maybe how we go to give her access to it, so, you know, something word in there, BJ, is that, is something you're saying we're allowed to do, or have this amiss in the page? I mean, I don't want to come back and have inventory, because that's just a minimal burden on us, as far as our time, and everything else we've got to do here, like I said, if you bring me a thumb drive tomorrow, I'll bring it back to you in a couple days, and here's everything that we have in the trunk, and you can have it, um, and you can store it wherever you want to store it, and you want to bring that same thumb drive back in six months, we can redo it, however you want to do it, I'm, I'm all for that, I have no problems with it, I try, you know...
Well, and I, like I said, I don't think that is to be in the contract, I think that is to be a policy in the way the city runs there.
Yeah, yeah, if you want that, there is, bring it to me.
We've got a computer, our files on there, it's not a problem, I have no issue with that.
I've always said to everybody that I work with, and everybody, all the people within the city that I work with, if we've got hoard information to keep our job safe, we're not doing a good job.
And I'm not getting that.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, it doesn't do me no benefit to hide my, I'm going to give you everything I have, because I'm doing you a good job, a good service, if I'm not here to help the city tomorrow, the city will go on, and it can come over here and say, hey, here's your stuff, he has, you know, that's why I want to, to, to go on, I'm not here to hoard any information, and I tell all of our employees, if we have to, we've got to do to keep your jobs secure, you're not doing a good job.
Well, like I said, I don't think, the city's been held hostage in the past by our lack of organization, when Dan Bliss died, everything Dan Bliss had in his head left with him, because we didn't have a policy, this is where this gets recorded, this is where it sits, you know, they, they think it's the same thing with BJ here, and Carl and everybody else, we just do not have a policy or repository for this kind of information, so, I think that's a contract failure, I think that's an organization failure in our department.
Would it be possible, with our computer within the building, we say, evidence, building, vectors, office in that area, or something, that anything belongs to, say, can be transferred to back computers, or it's quite clear, visible, whenever it's needed?
We have one, and we can do that.
That's, yeah, you've got a computer, you can definitely do that.
I, I will state that, um, William Fisher Christensen has been doing some research for us on, um, CAD, keep literally read-only, for the two new computers that we're getting out of wastewater treatment plant, because that's where Carl's computer will be, and he has very ancient one at present time, but one that actually works, and, and, and so that has been the intent, my understanding, is the engineer rights would be stored there, if that's where Carl's working.
Yeah, and, and, you know, he's got a good point there, coming in and doing it, because a lot of, obviously, what we're doing with CAD and everything else, I, I'm pretty sure we probably don't have a computer that can open it, I mean, you'll have a file there, but you probably can't open it.
Well, and having...
But you might be able to, you know, read only versions for, that they could open up and, and look at.
It's a subscription.
I think Carl should have a copy.
Believe it's a subscription.
I think Carl should have a copy, but I think there needs to be a place in City Hall where our files are.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I think City, I think the City's Hall should have a server of the hall files, everybody goes to one location to be backed up, and everything else, not on individual computers.
We do have a server.
Well, I'd like to say, I think, open up good discussion. Well, I think that first sentence, you know, the sole owner of that project, and I'm sure I could have went to BJ during the day, and actually, you know, I could have done that, but now, we got the ball wrong, we get that fixed, so, I'm happy with that.
Any further discussion on this agreement here?
I think a clarification on what the motions are for, because there was some...
Yes, attorney?
Yeah, there was some discussion.
So, who made the original one?
Councilman, Councilman.
Was the motion for the agreement as submitted, or the agreement plus Jim's draft?
The agreement is submitted.
Okay, was the second on that also?
I can clarify that, oh, yeah, because that was...
There was, we should allow discussion.
It's true, now, I mean, who seconded that, was it you?
No, I think Councilman Haller.
Councilman Haller?
Yes.
Councilman, will you second my motion, as anybody's got?
Well, yeah.
Great, is there any others with a discussion on this?
Do you go back and unwind this, and read forty-five pages, a minute, to figure out, get out of this stuff, yeah?
If there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Carried into order, uh, we move on to public comment. Should there be any, please state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I picked up some information this morning, I don't remember getting it out on, I'm going to double check, but, uh, I've been up to City Hall twice now, uh, I didn't get all the information, but then I wanted to double check before I come back. I'm concerned... To date, you talked about the replacement of Mr. DeFlee's, but his resignation did not become official till today. From today, you go forward and advertise, you guys aren't doing that. You guys aren't doing that. I remember when I challenged Mr. Bybee and he resigned a couple of times in the past. I said, I want to see his letter of resignation. Well, he changed his mind. We've got the same situation. You are not following policy. That needs to be readdressed. Mr. Mayor, we've yet...
You don't receive the letter, his letter recommend, his letter resignation proof?
No. You accepted the letter today, but he could have pulled it at any time. I changed my mind. I'm not reducing the fence I, George keeps complaining about, which hasn't been addressed yet. We have rules and regulations or we don't. That's one complaint. That needs to be addressed. The other complaint I have is Mr. Hanson has yet to finish his curb and gutter. He's about to sell his home. He's going to stick the new owner with the completion. Again, you have new construction. You had new construction. If a person needs time, I'm all for giving them time. But you can exempt a city councilman or a public official from meeting the same rules and regulations that you set for everybody else. That curb and gutter has to go in. Now, new sidewalks installed that they're well-rolling, Mr. Mayor, it's made out of asphalt. Here it calls specifically states, concrete, Portland cement. Can't be all right, pull it out. Who's looking over to that job? I'm disappointed. I also brought that up on other occasions. There by Art Place, you have another one there by Mr. Bassett's. Why do you create rules and regulations if you don't like them? You've got to change them. If you don't change them, when you live by the sword, start dying by the sword. And that's where you guys are at. You aggravate me with these rules and regulations with my family and you don't address it with your own. That needs to stop. I've made contact with one congressional person, I'm going to make contact with others and I'm going to try and get this stopped one way or the other. I come to you, to you folks, close my business and I've got three or four legal size tablets, I'm not going anywhere. Mr. Mayor, I've the Joker's wire, but I don't know what the new business is going to be. We're blocking the sidewalk for those trying to cross. Sidewalk has been put in, the last twenty feet or so, you've got riprap and boulders into it. Seventh Street.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, but I want some action, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, may I address the comment that Mr. Chatchis raised?
You may now.
Thank you so much.
Put in the sidewalks, Ian.
Item eight, adjournments, I have a motion to adjourn.
Move to the general.
Any discussion on that? Carry the sword, thank you.
George, for your permission, we're going to be funding money for the curb together in the contract.
Seeing as believing.
The larger the, it has to be higher, I'm going to show you.
Once it's put in, then I leave.
Well, money's going to give us the...
He's going to put it now. Put it now. Are you feeling? This has been a Georgetown production, George Chatchis reporting. The preceding program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by KGTV, Channel Ten in Ely, Nevada.